Thank you so much. I'm Peggy Holston. I'm the Director of Policy Services for the Oregon School Boards Association. I left a card on each of your areas, so please feel free to give me a call at any point in time. You may have some questions this evening. I just prepared a little bit of a summary, and those questions come later, so don't hesitate to just pick up the phone or do a quick email. I'll be more than glad to answer those questions. A couple things about the policy review process. Anybody here gone through a policy review process?
About 20 years ago.
20 years ago? You know, hopefully some of that's changed. A little background with me. I'm an educator. I am not an attorney. This is my 40th year in education. I'm not retired. I started out, I have a degree in nursing, so I'm a former school nurse. I also am a recovering assistant superintendent, HR director. That's where I met Andy. Recovering middle school teacher, high school teacher, elementary principal. Worked at the Department of Education. I worked in federal programs, curriculum, student services, and I think that was... Oh, you know, they added me into some of the... as needed. I was the health services person because of my nursing background. I was usually known as the state nitpicker with all the issues for lice. And so my background is pretty broad, let me tell you. I have lived and died in every single policy section. I absolutely love policy. And so, but I like teaching middle school too, so that usually answers most questions about me. And so, all of our policies at OSBA are reviewed by our legal team, and so there isn't a policy that doesn't, you know, comes out that hasn't been legally reviewed and isn't legal. And the other thing that you might not be aware of is, you know, we're not a regulatory agency. We're a membership association, and we're here primarily for technical assistance. You don't have to do anything I say. It's a great job. But, because policy is regulatory, and your policies are literally legal documents, we do have the regulatory organization sign off on our policies. So when you get a sample policy around special education, ODE has signed off on it, so that when Andy gets, you know, the assurances for special ed, when they talk about policies, if he has the most recent OSBA policies, he can check that box. Same thing with the Ethics Commission. Any of our policies that are related to the ethics rules, they are signed off by the Ethics Commission at the same time. Any of our policies around graduation, talented and gifted, you know, all those Division 22, again, when Andy brings those, as far as those assurances, any of those have always been reviewed and signed off by the Oregon Department of Education. You get into your transportation, you get into your nutrition. All of those policies, we go through them because they are the regulatory agencies, so that that way you understand that we do work in collaboration. I do lay awake at nights, but it's not dreaming up the policies. It's trying to keep you guys out of court with the policies. So, just a little bit about the policies that we have. The thing you'll also notice at the bottom of every single policy, there are hyperlinked legal references, and all you need to do is click on those, and it'll actually take you to the ORS, or even by statute, or the federal rules that support the language in the policy. I know I use that a lot as an HR director. When a parent would call and say, "What gives you the right to?" And I'd say, "ORS." Let them know which is, and send it to them because there are things that we as schools do have the legal right to do. Let's talk a little bit about the process, and a lot of it is up to you. The only thing that's not up to you is I'm assigned to do your policy as your policy specialist. As far as our caseloads, we spread them out. I have, I'm the director. I also have Rick Stuckey, who is a citizen of Silverton. And also, my executive secretary is Leslie Fisher, and her kids go here to the schools. A lot of ties to the Silverton community. But the rest of the process is pretty much up to you. The first thing you'll need to do is decide who I get to work with. And there's a variety of ways to do that, and again, up to you. The first thing I recommend is this should be a superintendents committee because when you look at your policies, the superintendent is who brings the policies as a recommendation to you. So it should be a superintendents committee. That superintendents committee is usually the superintendent and/or designee. There are times I've worked with the superintendent. There's times I've worked with an HR director, you know, somebody that's designated. I've actually worked with an operations director because that's who is in charge of policies in that district. So the superintendent or a designee. The board secretary or the superintendent supports staff. In this case, I'll get to work with Denise, I hope. Denise and I communicate regularly. It's fun. She's had to put faces with names. And then from there on, it really is up to how, the direction you want to go. Most districts choose, and in this case because you're a seven-member board, you know, you could look at three board members to sit on the committee. And I would recommend that you want to choose the board member, one that asks the most questions about policy because they get a lot of one-on-one time with me, and I can take that time to answer those questions in the committee setting. Usually, somebody who's new, because I think sometimes if we've done policy over and over and over, we think it's really clear because we've lived it, and I really like to get somebody new that hasn't lived it so that they can look at it and say, "Is this what this really says?" And so that's a great idea. And hopefully, there's somebody on the board that enjoys working with policy, and that would be a lot of fun if somebody wants to look at that. You don't need to have three. You could have one or two. But I always like to have a board member on that superintendents committee. The other thing we do is as we go through the different sections of the policy, especially when we get to Section D, which has to do with the fiscal, we would definitely have your business manager review that, and he or she would then attend that meeting and give us the feedback, or they would send the, they would send their comments to Denise or the superintendent so that when we review those, we would have the recommendations of the business manager. Same thing when we get to Section E. There's a lot that has to do with nutrition, so whoever's in charge of your field service. There's some IT. There's some things around transportation. We would want to farm those policies out before our committee meeting and make sure we get the people with the boots on the ground where those policies are going to directly impact. Make sure that they get their input, and again, either through attending the meeting where we're going to talk about those policies and/or just bringing their edits or their recommendations to the people at the committee. I have done rewrites or policies where I've had the whole board. The advantage to having the whole board is you can, if you have a quorum at that meeting, you can count that as your first reading. The negative, and this has actually happened more often than not. I think only one district was I ever able to make it through the whole rewrite process with a quorum, is people get burned out. "This is extra work. It's an extra meeting. Not everybody has time. Not everybody's interested in doing policy." And what happens is all of a sudden, I don't have a quorum, and then the whole purpose of doing a rewrite with the whole board is kind of out the window. The second thing I've noticed with a rewrite with the whole board is we spend too much time wordsmithing. When I have a smaller group, it's easier to work through that and a little faster. So, the first thing you'll need to decide is who's going to be working on this project. The next thing we need to decide is, you know, how quickly do you want to move through this? But the bigger issue is, so how much time do you have to do the work? The longest time, but yet it's the most manageable workload, is about every month, we meet for about two and a half hours. And we go through a couple sections at a time. And then, as we go through those sections, I'll tell you what that sounds like, then they come back for first reading and second reading. If you do any longer than that, you have an awful lot of reading. I need you to have the homework done before the meeting starts. If you're reading the policy for the first time at the superintendents' policy committee meeting and then talking off the top of your head, we're not going to get very far very fast. And it's not that I'm trying to cram it down your throat, but yet it's really important to be prepared. I just finished Estecada's, and they were able to finish it in seven months. But I have never met a committee that was so prepared and ready to rock and roll when we showed up. I mean, we were going through it. They knew what they knew. They knew what they didn't know. They had their questions written out, you know, in the margins. They had stuff circled, and we could just click through. If they didn't have any questions, we didn't discuss it. Move on. And we spent our time talking about the policies and the questions they had. So, you're going to need to decide, we can meet monthly, or we can maybe take a half a day, three or four times, and, you know, try to get through great big chunks. But realize, as a policy committee member, that's a lot of reading and a lot of editing. And then as a board, that means when it comes to first reading or second reading, you're going to have some pretty good sections to read. Listen, we also know, we did it in two full-day meetings, you know, but that was what their board wanted to do. They did it in the summer. They did it in the summer, you know, and that was just, they said, "We're going to do this," and their board committed. They had a subcommittee. And I sent Rick Stuckey up there, and he sat down. They got through half that manual, and it was seven hours. And then six weeks later, they did the other half for seven hours. And I thought, I thought, I like policy. I can do seven hours policy. But, you know, so I mean, you can do it. But yet, I'm just saying, I want you to realize the options that you have. Majority of the districts do about two and a half hours a month. And sometimes, as we're getting toward the end, Sections I that have to do with instruction, Section J that has to do with students, the pretty big ones, sometimes we'll sneak a second meeting in a month just to get it done. And besides, it's toward the end, and you're running to get it done. So, we can be pretty flexible in that area. So, who am I going to work with? What kind of timeframe are you looking at? Do you want to look at, you know, the monthly meetings and maybe sneak in a couple extra ones if we need to toward the end? Or do you want to just put the hammer down and do a couple half-days, or three or four half-days, or a couple full-days? That's your, that's your call.
If we meet two, two-and-a-half hours a month, how long realistically does it take to get through?
I can get you through in about nine months.
Till a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, a lot of it depends on a couple things. Again, how well-prepared you are. If we can't get through policies because you're still reading them and you haven't had a chance to do your homework, we don't get through as many policies during that two-and-a-half-hour time. The other thing too is, that happens sometimes, and this is where I need help from the superintendent is, or his designee. A lot of times, we'll be doing like a talented and gifted policy, and then the board all of a sudden wants a report from the superintendent on the talent, or not the board, but the committee, on, "Tell me about our talented and gifted program." Well, if that's how you want to spend your two-and-a-half hours is 45 minutes of him explaining talented and gifted, do you see where sometimes those meetings can get a little sidetracked? And so those things, I would be cautioning you. If you want to know more about your talented and gifted, and a lot of good questions come up during policy, which they will, that's fine, but is that the way you want to use that time? I would recommend that if you have questions about the program, many board members have a question, and it might be a request to Andy or to the program, Andy, and they would bring the program, and maybe that would be a work session or a 15-minute presentation from somebody about that program. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. So I hate to, I mean, getting sound like an attorney. It depends, as far as how long it would take. But we could probably, like you said, I could probably get it done. I'll be ready for nine, to get it done in nine months. Then the last but not least is what works best, and you need to share with me, and we'll look at my calendar. What I like to have happen is, let's pick a day of the month. Like, I just, I'm working with Colton right now. And so, they are doing the third Wednesday, and they happen to have board members that have some flexibility in their work schedule. They're doing 9:00 to 11:30 in the morning, the third Wednesday. And I just put out a calendar, and I said, "This Wednesday, we're going to do Section A and B. This one, we're doing C." And I was able to put a whole calendar out so you could kind of see what you would be doing, what day I would mail it out, what day our meeting is, what, you know, day I'll send you back the corrections. And then I have a spot for you to put your first reading, and I have a spot to put your adoption. So it's a real nice flow sheet. I love being organized. It's the only way I can do the job that I do. And I'm fairly linear. I taught biology when I was a high school teacher. Pretty linear, pretty systems-focused. The process, so we know who am I, do I get to work with? Do you want to do it monthly, or do you want to do it in bigger chunks? Need to hear back. Not necessarily tonight. Andy can share with me what your brothers are. Need to know if there's a certain, you know, day of the month we want to look at so I can set things out. And if something comes up, we understand that. I know I worked with, I think Estecada, we were doing the fourth, and so that ran into the, you know, the winter break. So, you know, we slid, we slid that one over. There was one that, you know, came, I think, the other thing I do for fun, I run marathons. And so, I had a marathon that race, so we had to slide that one around. So we did it the week before I left, and so the week that I was flying back. So we know everybody has some challenges. We can move those around. But if I can lay those out ahead of time, it makes it, you know, much easier to kind of look down the road and say, "We're not doing that. That's the week of graduation." Okay, we'll find another day. The other thing happens is, life happens sometimes. Weather, life. And if you have to cancel a meeting, what we have found is, it's easier to cancel and just pick it up at the next month and try and reschedule it because your time is so tight. And that gives us all, I always build in one or two meetings on the end of that just in case we run. I know one winter, I was doing Hillsborough's. Oh my gosh, I mean, every time we turned around. We had ice storms. We had freeways, you know, shut down, you know, all kinds of stuff. But we had built in some time, kind of like snow meetings, to go ahead and make those up. Let me share with you what I do so that you can get an idea, is I will go through every single policy and administrative regulation in your book. And I do what we call red line strikeout, which is something you probably see from our policy update. And so I strike out language that's either old, out of date, illegal, not best practices, you know, strike out the language we want to remove. And then we put in what we call red line. I put in, in red, the language that I want to substitute. I also tend to write you little notes at the top. Sometimes in an AR, administrative regulation, I'll say, "Is this still current practice?" You know, because you might say, "Wow, I didn't even know we said we did that." You know, because some of this just gets lost in the shovel. And so, I leave you little notes, or I might say, "This is okay, but here's a proposed one I'd like you to take a look at." You know, "Do you like one better than the other, or do you want to cut and paste some language?" You know, so I give you, you know, you get all kinds of little notes from me at the very top. I think the biggest thing I do for your policy manual is I recommend a lot of deleting. Lots of people don't know what policy is and what it isn't. And I'm hoping at some time, I can come back, and since I'm doing this one here, it'll be a shorter, but a brief one-on-one policy presentation to you to kind of talk about what policy is and what it isn't so that you understand a little more when you get the notes back from me. Oh, that's what she was talking about. Because if I have to do that each time, it's kind of like you establish your rules at the beginning of the school year, and then you don't have to, you know, do them over and over throughout the whole school year. So, but what we do is, I do that upfront. And so our first meeting, we probably look at Section A, B. It's all about you. It's on board governance. And about two weeks before the meeting date, you would receive hard copy. If you wanted electronic, I can do that. But a lot of people say they like to write all over it. We make the copies. I will send out to you two weeks before the meeting the section that we're going to be reviewing, so you have two weeks to read, write questions. Sometimes there's bracketed language. Circle what you think you want. You know, and then I'll come out. I'll bring my notebook. I'll have the paper. We come to consensus, what language we're going to use, answer some of your questions that you may have about that policy. And then I take it all back. I do all the corrections. Denise is going, "Yes." I do all the corrections. I send you back clean copies with a correction sheet that shows you everything we changed. That's what goes to the board for first reading. If there's additional questions, that's great. Andy or Denise can send them to me. I can answer them. Next time it goes to the board, it goes for adoption. Send me your adoption date. We put them on the policy. And then we move to the next section. So, it's kind of like painting a bridge. We just kind of keep rolling until we get to the end. Also, during the time that we're doing the policy, we will do all the policy updates for you. So for that nine months or a year, Denise never has to look at the policy update nor cut and paste. I, when I was the HR director, that's what my job was. And I'm the one that would go from 6:00 to midnight because that's when the phone didn't ring, in my office, as assistant soup, and I'd cut and paste the policy. So, I know what that's like. And so, so for that time, Denise isn't going to have to cut and paste. We'll be doing all of that work for you, the cutting and pasting. Then, like you say, we send it back, and then it goes in your books. And we just keep doing it till we get to the very end. And what's really nice, at the end, you'll end up with one hard manual, and then you'll end up with a disc. Of course, you know, as far as hosting policies and all that. You still will get your policy update during that time, you know, because, just, I mean, so you know what's coming. But you don't need to do the cutting and pasting. So, we'll be doing the cutting and pasting for you. So I know that's a lot of information, but it kind of gives you an idea of the process we use. You'd be thinking about how you want to do this, who work with, and what days. And I can do them in the evening. If all of you do an eight-to-five work schedule, or the people who are interested in this process, we can do it in the evening. I know most board members, they, "I can't be gone another evening." We can do it late afternoon, but again, that's up to you. I can make myself available when you're available.
I'm smart. It's the six o'clock in the morning, so...
Well, I, you know, I am actually, my next marathon is a week from Sunday. I'm trying to get back. I ran Boston in 2015. I'm trying to get back. And I get up at 4:00 because I'm, I can't work out in the evenings because I'm doing this. So the alarm goes off at 4:00, so I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Peggy, I have a question.
Yes.
So, how different is all of the districts in their policies? I mean, to me, I look at them as like, this is just redundancy, reinventing the wheel. Isn't there a standard policy that all the districts use? And then there's like several that would be specific? How does that work?
Actually, well, it's because of what I, it's because of local control. We put out templates that we know cover what the statutes require so that you don't have to start with a blank sheet of paper because most of you don't have the, I mean, it costs you a fortune to do the legal review. It can take us at least 18 to 22 hours to draft new policies, like the brand-new whistleblower policy that came out, or the drone policy, or those, you know. And so we put those out, and then as a result of which, there are, there's bracketed language in there, and some districts choose the May, and some districts choose the show. In your administrative regulations, there are certain ways that Silver Falls does their work, and so therefore, I want to make sure it, you know, it works. There are in the required policies, and this is getting a little bit to the presentation, but that's fine, in the required policies, the statutes. And that's what makes a policy required, is when there's a statute, federal or state, that says the board shall adopt policy. That's how you get a required marking on OSBA's policy. And then many times, it says, "And the policy shall cover." I will tell you, our templates are just about that, and just about every district will adopt something very similar. Corporate punishment policy is, there's only so many ways you can write that kind of a statute. A lot of our highly recommended policies are things that districts are required to do, but not required to be in policy. Here's an example. I mean, have you heard of the Americas with Disabilities Act? Believe it or not, in that 500-plus-page document, nowhere does it say, "The district shall adopt policy," but it does say, "The district shall." And that is a very high litigious or litigated area. So we have a template. So, I would probably say the policies are more similar than different. But yet, there is an opportunity when I do these kinds of, this kind of work with you to really do customizing of the policies and to say, "This is important to Silver Falls, and so we want this policy." And there might be another district that doesn't. The other thing is, you know, because ours have been legally reviewed, we can, you know, back those policies. I got an email from a district today saying, you know, "We're going to do a substantial change in the policy. Will you back it?" And I said, "I can't back anything that's illegal." You know, now, I said, "If you'd like to, you know, create the change and send it in, I can have, you know..." Spencer Lewis is a policy specialist. He's also an attorney in Bard in Oregon, so he's my policy specialist. And I have my own attorney that does policy. And so he'll probably take a look at it, or they can hire their own counsel to take a look at it. 99.9% of attorneys do not like to do policy. I'm doing The Bridgerton's policies right now. They have your own in-house counsel, and she said, "I don't want to ever look at another policy again. All of yours are legal. I don't need to review it." You know, so there are a lot of similarities. OSBA has been doing policy for almost 43 years, and we have a pretty doggone good track record. We really haven't had any of our policies when challenged overturned. And as a result of which, a lot of people say, "It's just a lot easier if we know," you know. But yet, you've got a lot of policy, you've got a lot of bracketed language. I want to know what Silver Falls wants.
We routinely customize our policies. I'm sure there's going to be policies you're going to come across that you'll consider non...
Important.
Well, not best practice, but that, but it's important to us to keep it that way, so...
Well, and see, that's what's really nice because those are the kinds of things I might put, recommend, delete, not a policy. And you're going to say, "You know, I understand where you're coming from, but this is critical for Silver Falls, and we really want to keep it as a policy. I might share with you what some of my concerns are, and I'm going to tell you, I'll push back." But they're your policies, not mine. But I also want to push back because if someone else challenges you, I want you to be able to say, "Right, we've looked at this. We know, we know why we want to keep that policy." You know, and I will not allow, I mean, I shouldn't say I won't allow you. As a board, you can pass anything you want. I will be really clear if we don't have legal support on it. A lot of times, if you've asked for some policy changes, I will take it back and have it looked at. And if it's not, we'll just simply say, "These are the concerns we would have, you know, with this, and this is what your potential liability would be with these policies." But I mean, you can go ahead and adopt them because they're the board's policies.
But I, that's what I, I guess what I, I didn't mean to...
No, this is great.
...make a big deal, but with all the legality that's involved, you would think that everybody would be pretty much cookie cutter.
We're close on some.
Some, so that's, it's just, it's amazing that there's that much difference in all the districts in Oregon.
It's because of local control. If we didn't have, I have the state of Arizona that their laws are so cookie cutter that you spend $20,000, and you would pay their School Board Association $20,000 a year, and they would hand you a cookie-cuttered policy manual for you to adopt.
Oh my.
Oh yeah, and it's 20 grand. I about died because I'm looking and going, and we show our prices, and they go, "And you go out and do..." I said, "We do." But we're in a different setting. But yeah, I mean, there are, Montana has a cookie cutter, and I think they're only $15,000 a year. Every board, every board just writes a check for $15,000 and sends it into the Montana School Board Association, and they send them a manual, and you just adopt it. You have no questions asked or know nothing, and you pay for their, you know, research development and their, their legal review. So there are states that are that way. We hang on to our local control. More similarities than differences, but the differences are important. Good question. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Any of you interested in being part of this committee?
I think you would be really good with it.
Actually, I would enjoy doing it.
I know.
There are people that do.
He loves it.
I do too.
There's no reason to take that gateway.
Good, if you have six, this is good. We can do six. Let me get this marathon out of the way so that I can, you know, not be running from 5:00 to 6:00.
But I'm not interested in these marathon days though. I'm more of a, take a little cookie cutter, little chop.
And he would be good at it too.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can choose as many. I know Wally has served on the board for a long time, and he, you know, and I would encourage, I know we have some new people. I would love fresh eyes. I mean, and that's something I, you know, I can leave, and you can have your discussion. But I do think, when you work it all the time, he's gone through it. I would love a set of fresh eyes that said, "You know, I'm not sure about this stuff, but I'd like to know a little more." It's a great way to find out how the district's supposed to work because all of a sudden, you go, "I didn't know we had that in policy." Or, "Oh my gosh, we better get rid of this fast." Or, "I don't think this is what we're doing." You know, and those are the kinds of things that I help you with.
Anybody else interested? I think we need one or two more people, so think about it. Andy, in a couple days, maybe you can send an email out just to remind you.
I sure will, yeah.
And if any of you have come up with some questions between now, and like I said, I don't run on Tuesdays, so, you know, don't do the 4:00 a.m. email tomorrow morning. But I am available at any time. Don't hesitate to email me or give me a call, and I'll be glad to answer those questions.
Well, if I may, I get a sense that there's an interest in doing this with a once-a-month type style of meeting anyway, and then having the policy updates to the board rather than a marathon.
Okay.
But I could, if I'm mistaken, please let me know because that would be helpful too as we begin to put this together.
That would certainly be my preference.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you very, very much, and I look forward to working with you. I think you have the service agreement somewhere Leslie sent it.
Yes, yes.
So taller, if that's what you need to do.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Jim, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, good job. Good question. Nice to meet you. Wally, it's good to see you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Any other questions?
I just, I, the only thing I was thinking was important to keep in mind is that we have both associations bargaining this morning. So.
Full alters, right? Full alters with the teachers.
Full alters with teachers for articles total with the classified plus financials. So.
Maybe we'll make this a two-year goal, then. We could do that. There's no reason to get through in a year.
Yeah, I just think that when you look at what April, May, and June could look like.
Yeah, good point.
Could be long.
So maybe this is a two-year thing.
It might stretch, or a year and a half.
Yeah, which I think would be fine.
Well, I mean, I would gladly do one of the, one of the union groups, if somebody else would do that.
Oh, we're going to write that down.
Yeah.
I don't want policy. I'll be careful. I'll be careful. I'll be careful. I'll say no way.
Yeah, I'll do a bargain.
Policy's not my forte. I hate to say it.
Todd, I think it'd be good for you to do the policy thing.
Oh, you do, huh?
If you have time, I think it'd be a good thing, just to be frank.
And the policies are important.
Ron might be interested in it, too.
He might be interested. Ron.
Nominate him.
Well, Wally would, I guess I'd like to ask the board, too, I think you made an offer to come back and give you, and she told me it would probably be a forty-five minutes to an hour-long presentation on policy, its purpose, how it, how it works, how you as a board administer policy. It may be a helpful exercise to do before we begin this process, but I'll leave that in there. If it'd be the next work session item.
Yeah, I agree it'd be a work session item, but if you guys are interested, I'd see and know here.
All right.
Okay. Let's not.
Okay.
Let's try to get this figured out here in the next month and what we're going to do. All right, next is the visioning process update for year three. Andy?
Yeah, this may be quicker than, than what we've done in the past. I brought this up in front of the administrative team the other day, and, you know, sometimes silence is golden. I think the, I think the reality is that we have a pretty powerful document. Last year, we did provide some revisions to this document, I think in order to best accommodate our needs. But at the same time, it's a good reminder that this is, we just completed year two, so beginning of year three of a five-year plan, and even though it's intended for this plan to have annual review and revisions as necessary, the intent is for a five-year plan. And the administrators were very clear that they have no interest in changing the district's core values or mission statement or, or core value, or, excuse me, strategic goals or vision. And with that said, the only other remaining items really pertain to the performance indicators and what they, what they look like. They're pretty refined, so I'm bringing you no recommendations from the administrative team, but would ask you as a board, if you have any interest in modifying any of this, other than maybe some semantics or photographs and things of that sort for year three. I'm going to suggest we move ahead, and I'll ask you to take action of this in your October meeting.
Great.
For year three.
Anybody have any changes you'd like to see made? All right.
Good office.
Thanks, Andy. All right, next is our mid-year fiscal accounting reporting for policy DI, D I C. I'll go through the questions, Andy will answer. I've got a signed copy here from Steve of his answers.
He apologizes that he couldn't be here tonight, he had a medical appointment to work on.
All right. So I'll go, I guess I'll state a question, Andy, if you can respond, and I'll respond with Steve's. Are the books balanced and reconciled?
Yes. And my only hesitancy there was that you heard from Steve last month that he was updating the specific funds which have now been fully updated.
Steve said yes as well. Does the adopted budget reflect expected expenditures?
Yes.
Steve said yes as well. Are all payroll reports filed and have all payroll liabilities been paid timely?
Yes.
Steve said yes as well. Have all federal and state grant reimbursement requests, as well as required financial reporting forms, been timely filed?
Yes.
Steve says yes as well. Are there any cases of fraud that we need to be aware of?
No.
Steve said no. Are there any changes in the internal control system?
No.
Steve said no. Are there any changes in the accounting system or accounting procedures?
No.
Steve said no. Are there any other financial-related matters we should be aware of?
No other specific matters that you aren't aware of. I will tell you, we're still putting closure to the middle school campus project, and so we should have final numbers on that to be able to reconcile everything. You know, we still have retainage to pay, we haven't done, you know, the final closure with the, with the contractor yet, and so there are still some of those loose ends to tie up, and I anticipate those will be in the next month, probably two months at the most.
Really? Even with the play shed?
Well, yeah, assuming you're going to approve the contract tonight, but yes, I mean, that's, that's a good point, Wally, I mean, that won't occur until.
Yeah, I think you're at least three.
And I was thinking specifically of the middle school, our contract with 2KG, it's really worth picking up, yeah.
All right. Steve said no on that as well. Are all cash investment accounts reconciled to the records?
Yes.
Steve said yes. Are all financial statements and information provided to the board accurate and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And Steve said yes as well. And now I understand there's an envelope that we open in executive session for the number 11. So next, Andy, can you give us an update on the transportation?
Sure. So during transportation services first year on, on site for us, they have been working diligently to attempt to solve some of the issues that we're still having. I think that it's a testament to their commitment to, to making this work. They flew in a person from Chicago who is their software expert, their regional manager and sales manager, the guy from Seattle and the guy from Las Vegas were here off and on for the first week and a half. The guy from Chicago actually stayed here two weeks, trying to figure out our routing system. Part of the problems that occurred were because our school district, as we knew it until a month ago, didn't exist, that the schools that they were trying to base their transportation no longer exist. Eugene Field and getting kids to that school was very different than getting kids up to Mark Twain. So while on paper it looks very simple, you start writing the logistics of buses and parents and traffic, and they're now trying to consolidate 25 years of experience in getting kids to Eugene Field into five days. And the same thing with Silverton Middle School. And then moving the sixth graders out of Robert Frost and putting them in here as well creates all of these configurations that any one thing would have created a few problems, it was a perfect storm. But that said, once the kinks kind of started to get worked out, some of the things that we're hearing them say now are about, what is our philosophy in terms of wait time, kids riding buses? Some of our practices are not in line with what a lot of other districts do, so maybe we have a different perspective on what transportation looks like, because we were at the same company for 25-plus years compared to what current trends are in transportation.
Can you give us some examples?
Well, they are surprised that we have been operating in the sense of it's okay for kids to be on buses for anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour. Most places are 30 minutes max.
Really?
To make that happen, you have to have more buses. And so, you know, even in Roseburg, they don't have kids on buses for 45 minutes to an hour.
I see Jervis School buses like at six o'clock at night.
Well, they have activities buses in Jervis as well, I know that they use their activities runs, yeah, and they've partnered with Woodburn to do some of that stuff, too.
And drop kids off at home?
At certain locations, and the parents can pick them up, yeah. So, and then there's also the driver shortage. They, to facilitate our routes, they flew in a driver from New Mexico and a driver from Arizona, and they housed them at one of the hotels here in town. And they are continuing to attempt to hire people. It's $16 an hour, but it's split shift, five hours at a time is guaranteed, it's a good economy, so there's not a lot of, you know, people who drive buses do it for a very specific reason, it fits in with their life, with their schedule. And so there's, they're continuing to recruit, they have a recruitment manager up here this week from California, helping them figuring out what other markets can we attack through social media, Craigslist, those kinds of things. I continue to remain impressed with John, the depot manager. He is very caring, he's very committed, he's really focused on employee training and, and communication and customer service. He continues to emphasize that daily with his drivers. I have met with his team every day the first week of school, the second and the third week, we've been meeting twice a week, and he continues to look at the software with the expert and the routes to figure out how can we maximize what we have, tweak what we have right now, and continue to improve service, so.
All right. Well, it explains why we hear, at least I've heard, very few issues out of town and lots of issues in town.
Yeah.
Same here. I, I do agree with the comment of, you know, seeing kids on the bus for, you know, sometimes an hour, when I hear somebody every gets picked up, I'm like, well, high school doesn't start till, that's a long time on a bus. But we're very, we're a very rural district, so maybe they'll have some.
And they're looking at everything with fresh eyes, and that versatrend expert, it really takes about six to seven months for your operation system to become clear in their software. And, you know, they're tweaking as they're going, but they, but it's just a matter of what our, our priorities and what it's our focus going to be. So after we get into it another month or so, I think John will be able to come to me with some real clear recommendations about, okay, this is where we're at, this is, this is what we have for this year, here's some recommendations, and I'll give everybody a price.
Yeah, please keep some updated.
So it sounds like they're, I mean, given that there's glitches, it sounds like they're fully committed, though, to make it right.
Yes.
And that you've been impressed with their.
Very much so. When they started, when they brought the guy out from Chicago, they had the man from Scial down here that whole week, and they were out watching buses. I mean, they're out at Robert Frost, watching the buses, taking notes, going to the middle school, watching what's going on, asking questions, why is that kid there, what's going on here, they're, they're asking questions.
I don't know if it'd be a ton of value, but maybe just to keep some public eyes on it to, to, to have maybe a representative in the next month or two at an open, at our normal board meeting, to come and talk, that way we have, you know, representing the public to kind of.
From Durham.
From, yeah, from Durham, what is it, John?
Uh, yeah, John.
From Las Vegas.
John Crane is the.
Yeah, did he propose with us?
Maybe wait till he has the recommendations ready.
Yeah, but I mean, two, three months down the road, as we get through this, it kind of like shows that they're committed, gives an update to the public.
I agree.
It'd be valuable.
I mentioned Andy, but I would like to continue hearing updates until we have everything nailed to it.
Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to remind people, you know, just be patient, it's only a few weeks, and, you know.
The fact that maybe it's what we want to hear.
I remember the first day I was following the bus out, Silverton Road, like 6:30 in the morning, it was like 40 miles an hour, he just would not go away. You know, it was like, next week, 55, no problem.
There's some glitches up, you know, they have one bus that was picking up kids at 5:45 in the morning, and I said, no, that cannot happen. Andy and I haven't even made the decision on whether it is at 5:45 and even to not be picking up kids and then giving the wind call now that it's a two-hour delay, please. So, interesting.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we have an action item to approve Jeff Carter's destruction of Salem and his contract to erect the covered player, play shed at Mark Twain Elementary.
So moved.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
With a second, any discussion on this one?
What's the timeframe?
On the NRP, we told them to have the structure erected between October 15th and November 15th. So we have submitted information to the city already, we have to submit our fee, but the city is, I think, is going to remove very quickly on, on this for us, and so sometimes that's the biggest delay. But, yeah, these folks knew that you submit a bid, it should be a value, that this thing can be finished by November 15th. So that's our target.
What was that, what was that previous bid that we?
107.
Okay.
Yeah, so we saved some money.
Good.
The original, what, 70, 76?
Our budget.
The original, or budget?
Our original estimate, I think.
Yeah, we, we, well, we were thinking in that, that estimating, in that area, probably 60 to 70 range.
Better.
So, is this thing a little closer to you and your?
No, it's, it's still way high, but, I mean, what do you do? Because I talked with another contractor today, and he said literally, I cannot do the work that I have. And I've got guys quitting, going to work elsewhere. Says, what do you do? So, I mean, either we would have to think of something completely different, or just bite the bullet and go with it, and, I mean, it's the way the market is right now, and...
I was telling you earlier, my club went from 85 to 100 bucks an hour within a span of a few months, so.
It's really under your craw, isn't it?
It is, man. It's like, come on.
And then we pay these football players so much money.
All right. I know that thing.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, all's in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. All right, this time we'll go ahead and adjourn into executive session for ORS 192.660-2F to consider information regarding records that are exempt from law from public inspection, mid-year accounting and reporting, policy DI, D I C, question 11, and ORS 192.660-2E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions, Grand Sale, Eugene Field. So, thanks. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move out of executive session and move into regular session. Do you have further business?
Yeah, I just have one question about the Grant Street property. See, and maybe my mind has slipped me in terms of updates, but just kind of where we're at in that process with the Grant Street property.
Sure, sure. That's the property located in the 617 Grant Street, and the, that you as a board approved purchase. We did a phase one environmental study of that, and the technician with K-Tech looked a little deeper into this property. And so we did do a phase two technical analysis, which involved core samples of up to 30 feet deep of four sites, or four, four areas around the site. And they all came back.
Who recommended that?
What's that?